I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Education to order and have the clerk lead us in the pledge.
Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. You may notice we look a little different tonight. And this is a celebration of sorts because last Friday, our seniors had their acceptance day.
Decision day.
Decision day, same thing. They decided they were accepted. We thought we would honor those seniors by having an assortment of as many of the colleges that our seniors are going to present tonight, and some of us who went to various colleges and universities. And we have an orange man contingent on the end here. So you obviously went there. And I didn't go to Queens, but I have someone going to Queens University of Charlotte, which is great. And Carol has a daughter going to Binghamton. And I have another son, my other twin, going to Binghamton. Anybody else have anybody going? Camille, you're all done with that. Mark and Lisa, your time is coming in regard to that. So this is why we're doing this, because we feel it's important to recognize our seniors as a community and to recognize, obviously, the accomplishments with our 97-plus percent graduation rate. And some of these colleges that you see are not places that everybody goes to. So I think that's an important thing to recognize as we look at what our staff achieves for our kids.
I'd just add, too, is that one of the great things about Penfield High School around Decision Day is it's not just college and universities, but it's that college and career readiness. So we did have students represent also the military and armed forces. We've got some T-shirts here to celebrate that, as well as heading off directly into the world of career. And so it's that decision post-high school plan. And the vast majority of our students go on to college, but some go directly into the trades and into the armed forces as well. So we just want to celebrate what the high school diploma meant for those students. And it was quite a lot of fun at the high school on Friday for the amount of seniors wearing those shirts to celebrate.
And the banners, you can't see it on camera, the banners are all through the library, which they normally are by staff. But hopefully during the meeting, we'll be able to focus on some of the sweatshirts and move it around so everybody can see it. Okay. If I could have a motion that the agenda of April 5th.
I'm sorry.
April 5th. What do they say? May 24th, thinking back to Acceptance Day, be approved as submitted. All those in favor? Thank you. At this point, we have a public hearing that we're going to commence, which is required by New York State education law, and it's in regard to our school safety plan. So I'd like to officially call that meeting to order and ask Dr. Putnam to introduce Sue Coomer.
Sure. I'd be happy to introduce Sue Coomer, who has presented multiple times here on the board in regards to her position as a counselor on special assignment. And I won't even begin to list all of the other roles she plays in our district. One of them is around the school safety plan, the district safety plan, and each individual school safety plan. And a lot of work goes into that. And I will say, because she won't, that this might be Sue's last presentation to the board because she heads off into the land of sunshine retirement at the end of the school year. So we appreciate everything that Sue has brought to the district in her time here. And I know, just having been in this role for two years, I really appreciate all the work that you do around this. Some of it is not always exciting work, but it's necessary and required work, and your passion for it always comes through, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. You're absolutely right. Some of it isn't as exciting as it should be, but that's okay. We understand the land of Medicaid. It's all good. A couple of things, and I'm going to get to, there should be slides, yes?
Yep.
Yay. Okay. So a lot has happened in New York over the last several years, really since the Newtown shooting. Governor Cuomo got together, the Safe Schools Task Force, they came up with a number of 50-some-odd initiatives that were whittled down with much negotiation. And only on May 19th did we receive what the final recommendations are. So I'm going to talk a little bit about those and a little, because it weaves into our emergency response plans. So the District Emergency Response Manual, as we have it right now, obviously is required by state law and by commissioners' regulations. The Safe Schools Against Violence, we are going to talk significantly about in a few slides. We have shared our plans, both district and building plans, with the New York State Police, who finally realized that they were also, actually, it went the other way around, State Ed finally realized that the police had shared them with State Ed just a couple of days ago after much conversation. So that's all good, because you're supposed to have your plans with State Ed. And the reason why I think we pay so much time and attention to these plans isn't because they're going to sit on a shelf, hopefully, but because it's not the time to figure out how to do something when you're in the middle of it. We really need to know, have a protocol. Our building principals need to know, and they have access to this district manual as well as their own building manuals, which they and their staff create. But it's time to plan before an event. So it's pretty automatic when you're in the middle of it. So our District Emergency Response Manual is an all-hazards plan. As you go through it, you're going to see everything from student riots to medical emergencies to hurricanes to tornadoes to earthquakes. It may seem like, oh, my goodness. And sometimes it is, oh, my goodness. But the objective is to be able to mitigate, prevent, and respond appropriately. We spent significant time this year on relocation and reunification plans and developing memorandums of understanding with our neighbors to each one of our six schools so that we have a pretty good understanding, as do our local police, with where we could evacuate children if we needed to. We're working on fine-tuning those plans so that they're available electronically. We talked a little bit about the Rapid Responder System in the past, but we'll, those are, we're ready to roll it out, and people are in the training process. So we'll be doing our first, we, I should say, the district will be doing your first plan led by Alan McNiff in his very capable hands. We'll be doing a response drill with emergency responders next fall using that electronic system, which is fantastic. So police on their en route can see a building plan, can see what our response protocol is, and so on, even while they're en route. So we've been working on that quite a lot. Won't go through the whole thing, but one of the things that surprised me when I was going through the regulations is crime scene protections. We made sure this time that we have a protocol on protecting a crime scene in case we have one. Safety initiatives this school year. The Capitol Security Project is going to be rolling out, is rolling out. That's going to be boosting up our safety and security initiatives as well, changing some entrances into buildings, video cameras, PA systems, and you've been very aware of that project. When it's done, that's really been a multi-year plan, starting with a vulnerability assessment that started, I think it was four years ago now, rolling into this, and you supported the work, thank you, thank you, rolling into getting the vote and getting some money so that the district could actually do some of these renovations, and then moving on. So it's really pretty exciting. And we talked just a bit about the Rapid Responder Training. Emergency response signs are now posted in all classrooms so that if we have guests at any one of our facilities, and we do every day, or even a substitute will know how to evacuate, know how to respond. We're working on updating the red book. You know that we've instituted Easy Lobby Management System, because every time you go in a building, you see it. And that's all part of our plan, as well as the sheltering and mask care MOUs that we just discussed. So initiatives for next year, and these are reflected in the plan, and these are actually part of that May 19 advisory that just came out from State Ed. The district will need to develop policies and procedures for contacting a parent, and I'm happy in any event a threat is levied against themselves or others. And I'm happy to say, that's the first bullet from State Ed, and we already have it. So yay us. That's the Threat Assessment Protocols, the School Violence Prevention Protocols. We've had them in place for years now. We have a documentation system. We have when we contacted the parent, what the form of the contact was, phone, personal, face-to-face, and so on. So we're in very, very good shape for that one. Another new requirement is providing annual training for all employees before September 1st or 30 days after they're hired on the emergency response plan for their buildings. That is brand-new, and we're going to be working with, in the next few weeks, building principals are aware of it, but we're going to be working with them to find a time to do that. My guess is it will probably be in one of the before-school meetings. We also need, as a district, to identify our chief emergency officer. That's someone who's going to be a liaison in the event of an emergency with school personnel and emergency personnel, and that one's up for grabs. If any of you want to volunteer, no, I'm only kidding, no volunteers. And probably for anybody who's been in a school recently during a fire drill, and we have 12 of them a year, eight before December 1st and four after in the spring, there is a new regulation, very exciting, that four of the 12 fire drills are now lockdown drills. You still have to do eight in the fall, but it's not before December 1st, it's before December 31st. And it has to be a mixture of lockdown and evacuation. And any evacuation drills, also, some of the evacuation drills also have to be used as secondary egress. You can't just go out the posted door. So the state's challenging us to be a little more thoughtful about how we train our kids and our staff. And that's the lockdown drill requirement that you have there. And those are all now in our plan. By the way, I had the plan done, and then they came out with this on May 19th. So not bitter at all. No, it's all good stuff. And this just went out to our administrators, the Fire and Emergency Drill Update, just so that they had, saw a simple breakdown on what they had to do and when they had to do it. So the building response plans are confidential. The district is a public document. But the building response plans, because they're specific in how they shelter children and some of the other techniques that they use to keep kids safe, are confidential and are not part of the public review. They are, however, we're required to have a summary for you. And so just to summarize what's in those plans, they contain confidential information, they're not available to the public, they have building-specific, multi-hazard responses. So where are you going to shelter kids? How are you going to move kids around? All of that is articulated. And again, one of the new requirements on May 19th is that each school building plan uses the New York State Emergency Response Plan template. We already did last year. So we were one of the test districts, and we went ahead and actually used the template to see how it would work, got some feedback from state police, gave some feedback to the state police. So our templates are all ready. We're all there. So that's great. The building plans also, or the building, emergency manuals also contain the building plans specifically. The entire New York State is on the cusp of going fully electronic. Right now, all of our building plans get uploaded to something called Operation Safeguard, which is a state police secure site. But we're still required to maintain paper. And we're just on the cusp. We have both. My guess is, in the future, although we'll still have some paper, it's going to be reduced to a template as well. And then, as I said, the MOUs for relocation and reunification are included in each building plan. Okay? So it's pretty exciting. It's a pretty exciting time, I think, in the district in terms of emergency management and safety. Alan McNiff will be shepherding the health and safety part of it and the emergency response manuals. And if you know Alan personally, you know that he is, you are in more than capable hands. He will do a magnificent job. So I'm really excited to kind of hand it off and say to a wonderful recipient, and want to thank you all for 24 years. Yay.
Thank you, Sue. And are there any comments in regard to the school safety plan as presented? Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Just trying to get this done, I think I can fair to say for Sue, it was sometimes like herding cats. Because there's a lot of work that has to get done, and our principals have a lot of work on their plate to begin with.
Very busy, yep.
And so really, just, I know I said it, but I want to make it clear how instrumental you were in really making sure that, one, we follow the protocol and get everything to State Ed as it's supposed to be, so we stay out of trouble there. But ultimately, we know it's good for our students. It is a change. It's the new world that we live in. And so I know there are a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls, but also, at a drop of a hat, Sue would go to the building and help. And I can speak to buildings. I know that, as a high school principal, it happened to me, and you'd make a call, and Sue would drop what she was doing and come over and work through with you. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
And I'd like to close the public hearing at this point. And Sue, on behalf of the board, I mean, certainly, over the years, we've seen many things that have come in, many that are mandated, others that are just really absolutely necessary due to the culture and the times of what we operate in. And the board is, we'll miss you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate your reports, and this is something that, fortunately, we don't have to hear a lot about, but it's there, we're prepared. And if you've ever been here during a drill, I mean, it's really top-notch. So it's all a credit to you. I've said to you before, you have a future in the private business world coordinating safety drills for multimillion-dollar structures. So, but on behalf of the board, thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay. We're moving on to our consent agenda. And if I could have a motion a second, that the proposed resolution of approving the following consent agenda items, approval of minutes, acceptance of recommendations by the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations on the Committee on Preschool Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel, and acceptance of various bids for the district. If I could have someone move that.
Someone move, second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. And well, during that, acceptance of the recommendations for the Superintendent of Personnel, we've had two key positions that we have filled, and I'd like Dr. Putnam to elaborate on that.
Sure. I'd love to. And so the board is aware, I do, I want to start with, actually, Mrs. Sharon Ertfitz. And the reason I'll start with Sharon is that Marcia Barrett has been here for a number of years, and in terms of transitioning a new superintendent, I think she's done it a couple dozen times, maybe not that much, but she's done it a few times and was instrumental in me moving from principal to acting superintendent to superintendent. And so I am a believer that we are all replaceable, regardless of what career you are in. But some people are much harder to replace than others. And Marcia, so thank you, first of all, for all the great work that you've given the district, and you're not leaving yet. So end of July, we have time to say our goodbyes. So when that happened, and Marcia let me know she was retiring, I went into panic mode in regards to, not only for myself, but for the board clerk, because she does wear two hats. And so we put out the canvass, and we interviewed, and I was very happy to see Mrs. Sharon Ertfitz's name show up on the interview list. And so Sharon is, Sharon's Penfield. So Sharon lives in Penfield, three wonderful boys who I've gotten a chance to meet that have all graduated from Penfield, and was an assistant principal at the high school, sorry, was the clerical for the assistant principal at the high school for a number of years, and then sort of took a promotional position and went to Rush Henrietta as the high school principal's head secretary, and then moved up the ranks there and worked in the Human Resources Office as well. I think I got that right? Am I good? All right. So, but one of the things, we're really happy to have Sharon here, starting July 18th, Sharon will come in and be a Penfield employee again, and her commute will be very much shorter than it is now. And I do just want to mention, and we did go through the interview process, so we interviewed quite a lot of people, we put Sharon through the wringer. I'm happy it worked out the way it did, because what people may or may not know is that my very first secretary, when I came to Penfield in January 2008, was Sharon Ertfitz at the high school. And she taught me the ropes here in Penfield, and that transition from Greece Olympia to Penfield. So having her return to Penfield, I think, will be wonderful. I look forward to working with her, and she'll be working with Marcia for a couple of weeks to try to tap into all of her knowledge as well for that transition. So first of all, we just approved, and I appreciate that, for the board, Mrs. Sharon Ertfitz, who will be joining us. And then, second, but not least, we're very, very excited to fill a position that has been open for the last six months, and that's the principal at Cobble's Elementary School. And for the community, as they know, and the board is aware, we, this is the second time we went out for the search. And the reason was very, we had very strong candidates the first time. We had some very strong finalists, but it just wasn't the right fit. And I am always going to, as long as I sit in this seat, hold out for excellence. We are Penfield. I'm proud to live here. I'm proud to send my kids here, and we want the very best. And our hiring process is shifting for teachers and administrators, and in this case, we held out for excellence. And very excited to bring Dr. Stephen Kenny in as the new Cobble's principal. Stephen comes from Fairport, where he's been an elementary school principal for the last six years, as well as some other districts, as assistant principal and teacher. And he just has, when you get to know him and meet him and take a look at his credentials, and I can't thank Barb enough as well for the number of reference checks her and I did to dig in and vet the candidate. And all we get back is an absolute focus on instructional excellence, but combined with that is building a positive culture and a caring community. And what hit home for me, and I think it will for the board, too, is a true focus on whole student, which we do know is aligned to our district goals. And so meeting with Dr. Steve Kenny throughout the process and spending a half a day with him at the end, a tour through Cobble's and come back and interview and make him do an on-demand writing task, was really a lot of fun and felt that connection of this is going to be great for Cobble's and Penfield. So I just want to, again, thank the board and Sharon and Dr. Stephen Kenny for joining us here in Penfield.
As we go on to our treasurer's report, I wanted to note that Mr. William Maloney, our treasurer, is sitting in at the end of the table for Assistant Superintendent Mark Sansucci, who wasn't able to be with us tonight. And welcome.
Thank you.
And if we have any questions, this is the time, while we have them at the table. Yeah.
Totally okay.
Attached is the treasurer's report for the month ending March 31st, 2016. If I could have a motion a second, that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending March 31st, 2016, be approved. Any questions? And we do receive a comprehensive packet, thank you.
Yes.
Bill, every month, that we do look at substantially. So all those in favor? Thank you. We now have some special reports, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Putnam.
If, throughout this meeting, if you do have questions for Mr. Maloney, please just remember, we can always ask him questions. So, he actually is really good at answers, too. We have two special reports tonight, which are both very, very positive and exciting. And the first is, I believe it's the first year, the first time this school year that we have the Penfield's First Robotics Team back. So I'd like to invite them up. I believe they're coming up. And I'm going to let you, wonderful students, introduce yourself and to the board and to the community. And I know that you have a PowerPoint that goes with your presentation, and I think there's a clicker right there. You should be all set.
Would you like to hold the power?
All right. Hello, my name is Katie. This is Mal.
And this is Jordan. We are representing the First Robotics Team 511 Rolling Thunder from Penfield High School. This is our 12th year, and we are here to tell you guys about our 2016 season.
Does it click?
Yeah.
Oh, that's so cool. Okay, sorry.
You are the robotics team, right?
We like to, we like to think that.
It's been a long day. Okay. Every robotics team has a mission statement. Ours is inspiring students to become leaders through engineering and the fun of robotics.
So our team is comprised of 35 students, freshmen through seniors. We have 26 mentors, 10 of which are from our main sponsor, Harris, and 16 of which are from the community, some of which are, some of which are parents, from parents of current and former student team members. And we also have four really awesome teachers that help us out.
Okay. So we were fortunate enough to be able to attend three competitions this year. Our local competition is the Finger Lakes Regional at RIT. We won three awards and, like, a secondary award, basically. Mr. Brewer won the Woody Flowers Award, which represents an outstanding mentor in the First Robotics Competition. I think he's back there. I was fortunate enough to win the Dean's List Award, which signifies a student, an exemplary student in the First Robotics Competition. And our team won the imagery award, as you can see by our awesome camo theme and our robot, which we will show you later. And we were one of the top three safest teams. At the Toronto Regional, we won the Chairman's Award. This is our seventh time winning it, and it is the most prestigious award in first, and it represents an exemplary team, and it qualified us for the World Championships in St. Louis. And we were also regional finalists, which means, kind of means we were, like, in second place. And at St. Louis in World Championships, we were the Curie subdivision winners. So at championships, there, I think there are eight different fields, and they're all named after, like, scientists or someone who's made a significant thing. And we were on the Curie field, and the Einstein field is where the final matches happen, where the winners of all those field come and compete against each other. And we made it to Einstein since we were winners of one of those divisions.
We do lots of demonstrations throughout the year, and it's anything from going to local elementary schools to doing crazy stuff, like demoing at a food truck rodeo. And we also do lots of community services, and that's anything from going to the airport to welcome veterans home after visiting the war memorials, to things like going to charity walks to support past members of our robotics team that have been affected by these diseases.
So one of the community service projects that our team adopted this year was 3D printing prosthetic hands. It's essentially a process that starts with some CAD files, computer files, and using, with the use of the school's 3D printer, about 16 hours later, we have the parts for a hand, and we clean those parts off, put them together, and then we ship them off to a company called Enable. Enable then completely finishes the assembly process, and then they will actually match that hand up with a child who doesn't have one. And sometimes, you know, those hands can go as far as Afghanistan, or sometimes, you know, they go to Haiti or countries of that sort, or where several thousand-dollar prosthetic really isn't an option. Today, we've actually printed 26 hands, and we're still on the count. And we, recently, we've been featured on local news and social media for our efforts. So it's been a great project. We really hope to continue it.
So we, sorry, we try and do as much school outreach as we can. We've done things within the school, like a bottle-and-can drive, and we demonstrate our robot at the Clubs and Activities Fair, and the freshman orientation to try and get new freshmen to join, bring in some new blood. We've put robotics into four of the Penfield district schools, and we helped start the FTC team in Bay Trail, and they just completed their third year of competition, and they're doing pretty great. Pretty proud of them.
We have several large events that we host throughout the year. One of them is Ra-Cha-Cha Ruckus. It's a Halloween-themed off-season competition that we host, and about 40 teams show up every year, and that's anywhere from local teams in New York all the way from teams in Canada. We also host a competition called Rally. It's an unofficial competition we host towards the end of
competition we host towards the end of build season and we invite all the local teams to come and test out their robots before competition.
I apologize that some of the things on these slides are spelled wrong. This was made during AP week, so it's kind of stressful. But that's supposed to be RMEG, which is the All Rookie Meeting Greet, which is an event that we host at the championship. And we, it's used to welcome rookie teams into first and kind of network with them and help them keep their sustainability.
We also hold an off-season event for First Lego League, which is the elementary level robotics. And the, the off-season that we hold, we call it Rumble, we hold it in the Commons. And it's essentially just a chance for the teams to, you know, kind of gather one last time and play this year's game before, you know, they move into their off-season, then eventually get a new game in the fall and start all over again. Oh, that's also me. So, this year, since we did so well at world championships, we were fortunate enough to be invited to the Indiana Robotics Invitational. And in the first community, we call it IRI. The Indiana Robotics Invitational is actually one of, if not the most prestigious off-season competition in the first community. So, if you are invited there, that means you did something right. So, that will actually be towards, it will actually be around July 15th, we'll head down to Indiana. We also signed up for another off-season event, which is still, still just as awesome, don't get me wrong. That's called Midnight Mayhem, it's in New Jersey, takes place on June 25th, I believe.
Yep. And we will be attending the first National Advocacy Conference for the third year in June. It's where we meet with our New York State Representatives in Senate to discuss STEM education funding programs across the United States. We are the New York State Representative Team at the conference and we're really excited that we were invited for a third year. Oh, and also, Ruckus, we will be hosting again in October of 2016, not 2014. It will be held at the Main Street Armory and further information will be sent out. So, if any of you would like to attend, you can.
Some of the statistics about our alumni, 100% graduate from high school, 95% have gone to college or go straight into the armed forces or into their careers, and 89% will go on to major in STEM.
These are our seniors this year, Tess, Katie, Maddie, Zach and Ryan. Zach and Ryan will both be going into engineering majors. Tess and Maddie are going into music and Katie is going into a medical field.
So, when we build our robot, we usually divide it up into sub-teams. And this year, we had three main subsystems on the robot, one of which is the scaler, which essentially in the last 20 seconds of the, of the match, the robot has the opportunity to essentially do a pull-up. And, you know, if you're able to successfully complete that, you get more points. So, to achieve that action, we designed a nested chain scaler and it, it was, it was a, an adventure to design, build and fix repeatedly. But that, that had its challenges, but you know, we overcome those and we're, we're proud of that. And we also had another system called the breacher, and actually, that's on top of the robot, if you can see it, I'm trying to point to it. And that actually is used to manipulate the game elements, were just, which were just 10-inch foam balls. And, you know, that was used to score balls in the, in the goals. And of course, you have your drive base, which is responsible for getting the robot around the field, otherwise it just kind of sits there and people can ask questions. But that's just six inch, sorry, six, eight-inch pneumatic wheels powered by four motors.
Okay, so, your strategies? In the strategy, we just breach the defenses, which on the field, there are a bunch of different obstacles we have to overgo with the robot. So, to breach them, you have to get four out of the five. So, we would breach four of them and score on the logo, which is depicted in that picture right there. And we would scale, which is basically a pull-up with the robot with the scaler, I'm Jordan just talked about. And now, we'll be showing you the robot, so you guys can bring it down. This is robot number two. Our competition robot is still in its crate, I guess, from, it just got shipped back from St. Louis.
Cafeteria.
It's by the cafeteria, if you want to see it. But this is, it's robot and our drivers are going to drive it around a little bit for you.
We also, one of the team traditions we have every year is we name our robot. And since it's a medieval-themed game, we decided to give it a medieval-themed name. So, you know, it only seemed right to name it Sir Rolling of Thunder. So, actually, this would be easier to describe with a field, but a field is quite large. But essentially, what would happen is the match would start and for the first 15 seconds, the ma, the robot operates autonomously. In other words, it's pre-programmed, it does everything on its own with no human interaction or interference. And sometimes that doesn't go so well, sometimes it goes awesome. Shout out to Zach for doing our autonomous, good job, Zach. So then, for the next, for the remaining 2 minutes and 15 seconds, we enter the teleoperated mode, which drivers actually step up to the controls and they control the robot. And as you just saw Casey, Andrew and Kelvin driving the robot, they can manipulate the game elements, they can drive around the field. And as I said earlier, in the past, in the last 20 seconds, they have the opportunity to extend the scaler and do a pull-up. So, if you've ever seen 120 pounds of robot do a pull-up, it's pretty impressive. So then essentially, the scaler would extend, hook on and retract.
Okay, so I guess that's it for our robot demonstration. We'd like to present a few awards today. So, if Jordan, if you want to hold it up. Since we were the Curie field winners at world championships, we have our medal here. And the blue, red and white stripes, that is the only place at Champs where you can get that, like ribbon. Everywhere else, it's like a blue or a red, but this signifies like all the first colors. So, that's pretty cool that all the students get to have one of those type of ribbons in their collection. And we have one of our, our team pictures from when we won. And the backing of the, like the red fabric is from our bumpers on our competition robot. And these were handmade by one of our mentors, Mr. Hall, and we call him Bear. So, we just want to thank him for making those. They're really pretty. So, we have them. So, Dr. Putnam?
Alright. That's great. That's, thank you very much, thank you. Oh my gosh, that's great.
And then Mr. Piper. And, yeah, one to the whole Board of Education. Yes. Another one.
If you, alright.
And the board.
Yes.
So, here's our, Mr. Piper, the, the board president.
Well, thank you very much. Very nice.
I can, I can share with you, these are, will be proudly displayed over at district office for all to see when they come in. This is really, really cool.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else to share?
Oh, okay, I, yeah.
I just, I know Mr. Piper is truly going to say a couple words. I just wanted to tell you that having sat at that table as an assistant principal and a principal, you, like if you want a job, I think we should just hire you now because you just presented so well. And it's just in a, it's, for me, it's always a great reminder of the minds we have here in Penfield. And I know that you've got a couple of staff members with you. So, could you just mention, maybe we could have them stand up? I know you've got a couple of your robotics teachers and advisors back there. So, if you, if you don't mind just introducing them, too.
So, actually, tonight, we have two of our teacher advisors with us, Mr. Brewer and Mr. Pisa. So, if you got, oh, you're already standing, awesome, they're ahead of me.
Also, we have Bear up there and he's the one that made the awards for you. And Calvin, Andrew and Zach, which are some of our other students that helped with the robot.
We have great athletic teams in Penfield. And I know a lot of kids look up to the athletic teams and like little kids who play, you know, Pop Warner football, look up to the varsity players. I, I got to tell you, so you know that I have two kids at Cobles, a second grader and third grader, and you're at many of those events, like the Ice Cream Social and, and Science Night at Cobles. My two children look at you like absolute rock stars. So, when we pull in and we see the robot, the screaming starts at the robots there. They look at the camo pants that I do have a pair and wear and although they're mortified when I do wear them.
Rock them, by the way.
They're also proud. And I just, you need to know that, I think, when you take a look at that data you showed around graduation rates and where people in the robotics team head off to, there are the youth of our, of our, of our district that look at this and this is something for them. They might not be athletically inclined, that might not be their thing. But if you love science and math and like to be able to tinker and play, you, you've got two kids who, and I know there's many more of them, that look at you guys like rock stars. So, I just, one, appreciate that and two, remind you and the whole team that you are role models. And you proved it tonight when you talked about the Bay Trail team and the word you used, that you were so proud of them. And, and that, I think is wonderful. So, thank you so much for all that you give to Penfield.
Thank you so much.
Board members, any questions? Camille?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to comment that I met a student from, who goes to high school outside the Boston area. And when I started, and he happens to be on the robotics team and I mentioned your team and he just, he thought I was a rock star because I was from Penfield and I knew Rolling Thunder. So, you're really, it's, it's not just Penfield, but you bring so much credit from around, you know, all the different states. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Barb?
There's a few of us that would like to know where we can get your camo pants.
We actually, funny you should mention that, we actually got them online. So, you can probably just Google it and look it up, it's pretty easy to find.
Thank you.
Or if you want to email any one of our adult mentors, any of the students, we can totally hook you up.
Okay.
So, Mr. Brewer, if you can email me that link, I'll make sure the board gets it.
Carol?
So, every, every year you come, and this is after your meeting, you know, the meeting where you bring the robot and we get to see you. But there's, like, all through the year, we hear about you. Every couple of weeks, we hear about something else that robotics did. And I get excited when I see you at the public market. So, that's always exciting and we're there for vegetables, but then, no, we're there for the robots. So, I love that, I really love that. But I think, I don't know, the part that touches me the most is how you are able this year with your three-dimensional printing to help countries overseas. And to me, that says so much about your team, the culture of your team and how you want to make a difference in the world and in countries that aren't as lucky as, as we have it here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, again, I wouldn't worry about the PowerPoint because my guess is you could probably create a time travel machine before you change that. But every year, it gets better and better and we really appreciate it. And how you represent Penfield is, is really tremendous. So, thank you again for coming and joining us and updating us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us.
We'll give just a minute for the, for the robot to clear out.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to let Dr. Putnam continue.
Sure. I have, I have another great presentation, special report, and it's our Rotary Exchange student. And I believe Jack Best, do you want to come up as well and introduce our, our foreign exchange student? And I'll just mention, as you're coming up, it really is a partnership with the Rotary, with the Penfield Rotary and one that we really appreciate. One of our board goals and district goals is around partnerships. And, and I think, Jack, is this the second year now of a Rotary Foreign Exchange student?
30 years, Tom.
30 years, but.
It seems like two.
It does. Has it always been a?
30 years, yeah. Marsha, it goes back a few years.
But it's, but not, but, but here in Penfield?
In Penfield.
But just, this is the second year that you've come to the board?
Second year that we've come to the board.
I knew there was a second year in there somewhere.
We're delighted, we've been here a long time.
No, that's great.
And it's another extraordinary program that Penfield High School actually does together with Rotary. And what's so extraordinary about it, I heard what you do with the kids and what a difference they make around the world. And what other program might be better than exchanging our kids in terms of fostering friendship and understanding around the world? This program really involves a lot of people, too. So, I'm delighted to say that behind me are, is my colleague in Youth Exchange, Dr. Nancy Alman, who came to us after a career in education and two of Fur's families, the Taylors and the Nussbaumers. Lee Taylor was in Chile a couple of years ago, so we send kids out. And the Nussbaumers have Jessica, who is in Germany right now, and both of them have been hosting Fur, too. So, we're just delighted to have Fur here. So, Fur, we just, would like you to just take a few minutes and talk about what it's been like here in the United States.
Okay, so, my name is Fernanda, I'm 18 years old and I want to say thank you to everybody. And thank you to all my families and all, like, the Penfield Rotary, District and Penfield Rotary Club. And so, I got here on August 21st and so, it's nine months. And it's been like amazing experience, like time alive experience. And these schools, it's really, really different, like Brazil and here. And like the biggest difference maybe is, like, that we switch cla, no, the teachers switch around the classes and we stay in the same classroom. Instead, like, we, like, we go around classes and stuff. And it's also, I don't, I don't know, it's, I mean, it's very different. There's like rather than nothing like, like here. So, I don't know, I don't know, I just.
What did you expect when you came here? What did you think it would be like in the United States?
I mean, there's a lot of American high school mu, movies, like high school music or like many others. So, I mean, I kind of, like, I, I kind of expect something like really close to it. And it actually is, I mean, it's like pretty similar, like the way that things are. I mean, no one sings and everything. But like, it's just like pretty, like similar, the routine and like all the activities. Oh, and we, like, we don't, I mean, esports are not as a big deal as it is here. We have sports, but like, if you go to college, like, it doesn't matter, like, what you did in high school, it doesn't matter at all. Like, your high school, like, no one cares. And especially the, the sports, it doesn't count for you, you don't get scholarships. You can get loans, but not scholarships. And we have like public col, college and like, they're actually better than private. And like, when they're public, they're completely free. And the private is also like way cheaper. And I mean, these schools, like the public schools in Brazil, I can't even say much about it because I was never in a public school, like high school. And they're not as good as private schools there. So, I was always in my, in a private school. And like, they're way better than, than a public school. And, and we don't choose our subjects, like we have to take everything. And, yeah.
What was your favorite food?
Maybe mac and cheese.
Yeah, just finish up and talk about your prom. I understand you were at the prom last week. Do you have proms in Brazil?
We have like graduation, so, at the end of the year, we're, and actually, our school starts in January and then, I mean, end of January and then it start, and it ends up at June, not June, November, like, yeah, Novemberish. And then, we have like the graduation and like, it's like three days. So, it's one day of graduation, one day of, like, the party, which would be like the prom, kind of like a ball, a ball, but it's not really a ball. And then some schools, when they're Catholic, like, they have like the, like, they have a Catholic celebration thing for them and they give the blessing. But I wasn't in a Catholic school, so mine was, would be just two days.
So, the prom, you enjoyed it?
Yeah, I was a lot of.
That was good. Well, thanks so much, folks. So, we just think that the program is so great and we really appreciate the warm welcome that you give to our kids. As Fernanda goes back to Brazil in August, we will have Benji Rooster coming in from Germany, that's an RU Umla. So, I didn't know if I pronounced it correctly, but Benji will be in and I'm sure you'll get to see him next year, too.
Thank you. And I, I look forward to the 31st year and your third year at the board next time.
Thanks so much.
No, thank you very much. And thanks for, I've always said to our Foreign Exchange students, we have a little saying when you go off to graduate, is, is once a patriot, always a patriot. So, as you leave here, you're always part of the Penfield community.
Thank you.
And hopefully, you'll stay in touch with some of the folks that you met and, and, and keep us aware of what's happening as you head back to Brazil.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're on the visitor speaking time. This is a time provided on the agenda for residents to bring their concerns and comments to the board. Did we have anyone sign up tonight?
No one.
To do that? This is always an opportu, yes?
Come in speaking without signing up, I didn't know I had to sign up.
Sure, you can come up, sure. I just wanted to mention that we have a five-minute limit on the comments, but you're welcome to do that and even though you didn't sign up.
My name is George Drew and I'm just here for some guidance. My son is on the, on the varsity baseball team and I'm here kind of representing many of the parents on the Penfield baseball team. parents on the Penfield baseball team. We're trying to, we're trying to figure out how we go about getting a fence and a scoreboard for the baseball field out there. I'm part of the booster club program, and I go to the meetings, and we hear, we hear a number of different excuses or answers to questions about why we don't have them. We just unfortunately finished our season tonight by losing to East High School in the sectionals. But every single game I went to this year around the community, every single school that we had, had an outfield fence and had a working baseball scoreboard, except for Penfield. So, it's kind of embarrassing, I think, and I don't know the proper procedure, so I come to you solely to have someone help me figure out what it is we need to do. My whole intention for tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. And what we'll do is have Dr. Putnam follow up with you after the meeting in regard to the process and procedure. And, you know, the board members do rotate on the boosters as well, so we attend those meetings, and we certainly can touch base with the boosters as well. So, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Super, thank you.
All right. Okay, Aubrey's not here tonight, so we'll move on to the superintendent's reports.
Great. All right. So, we do have some student and staff honors and a donation that we'll want to mention. And then, we do have Mr. Gary Huffman here for a construction update, as well as Penfield is keeping us in the loop with the construction that's taking place. So, staff and student honors. Once again, I get excited and let you know that the Penfield High School newspaper, The Pendulum, received a first-place award in the American Scholastic Press Association 2015-16 Annual Review and Contest Awards for Scholastics Newspapers. And congratulations to the entire newspaper staff. That paper, over the last several years, has continued to get stronger and stronger, and a first-place award in this contest really says a lot about Penfield and The Pendulum and the students that write that, because it is a student-run paper. The PSA awards, congratulations to the PHS students who were named winners in the Monroe County Stop DWI Public Service Announcement Contest. First place is Abby Benavich and Ellis Martinez-Crantz and Renita Williams, and second was Colin Lazapone. And I just wanted to remind the board that this is the third year that Penfield is sweeping the contest. It's the third year, I believe, of the contest, and it's the third year we have first and second. Last year, we had first, second, and third. And so, the first-place public service announcement does get played on television, and, like, last year, I'll update the board, they let us know in the fall when it's broadcast, it'll be on all the network channels, and so it's really a great experience, and those kids put that together in their film class. Poster contest, congratulations to Bay Trail Middle School's sixth grader, Ally Salvin, for being named a winner of the Earth Day Poster Contest sponsored by the New York State Senate. And this year's theme was Reduce, Reuse, Recycle. Kevin Knapp from Senator Rich Funky's office presented Ally and her parents with an official mounted photograph of her work during a recognition ceremony, and that's wonderful. United Way, I'm really excited to mention that, thanks to our faculty and staff members, as well as our retirees, for pledging a total of $17,852 this year in the United Way campaign, nearly doubling last year's amount. And so, it is a kudos to Barb Gregory's office and Lori Racco in her office, who really was in charge district-wide, and then every building had a contact person. And a lot of it really is getting the information out and telling people about the United Way, and so, just, we really put sort of a lot of information out there. And again, it says a lot, because it's really about the Penfield community of faculty, staff, and retirees giving back to the, our local Rochester community, and the United Way does that. So, great thanks to all of our staff. The Penny Games fundraiser, Harris Hill Elementary School raised $854.74 for leukemia in lymphoma society through its Penny Games fundraiser. Students collected pennies for two weeks, and the Student Connection Team organized a school-wide vote to choose the charity to benefit from the fundraiser. A great charity to give to and a great way for our younger students to give back to the community they're in. Reward School, Penfield High School has been named a high-performing reward school by the New York State Education Department, based on 2014-15 school-year test results. Congratulations to our high school students and staff. I think this is fitting, having just seen the robotics team talk about everything, and obviously proves that we've got a lot of great things happening, and it's a reward school based on New York State criteria. National Honor Society, John Piper, as board president, spoke at our National Honor Society Award induction for our current juniors, who will be National Honor Society members next year. We had 60 Penfield High School students inducted into the National Honor Society at the spring induction. Congratulations to them. Outstanding Senior of the Year, Matthew Ramsey, was recognized as Penfield High School's Outstanding Senior at the Annual Monroe County Council of School Superintendent's Outstanding Senior Recognition Dinner. I got to have dinner last Wednesday with Matt and his parents, and I got to say to him, "What a great honor. Some people get cash, and you get to have dinner with a superintendent." So, it was all the superintendents in Monroe County, each select one student from their high school as outstanding senior. I allowed the high school staff and counselors to select that student, because they are at the building and they know those students best. Matt Ramsey fit the bill incredibly well, very bright young man, a very great big brother. He's the oldest, has a couple little sisters, and is absolutely a great kid, and is heading into a potentially long run, what he wants to be is a defense attorney, and it's always good to know an attorney, so Matt promised he'd keep an eye out for me. Donation, we have, I mentioned Mrs. Lori Racco, who headed up the United, headed up the United Way. She also donated a buffet E11 BB clarinet, hopefully B-flat. Thank you. I, my, my wife goes to Suzuki lessons with my children. So, but with a great clarinet and its case to the Penfield Music Department. This instrument is a welcome addition to the music program, and the music department expresses appreciation for this generous donation. And that is the end of my reports. The next part is our construction update. There's a couple of photos up there, and I'll have Mr. Huffman join the table.
They asked me if I had pictures, I said no.
This is one of the reasons that Marcia Barrett is going to be hard to replace, because she added some great photos of the construction projects taking place around Penfield.
Well, they came out, they came out of the monthly report, I think, so...
Perfect.
Perfect.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and speak to you. I just wanted to update you on the Capitol Project. It's going very well. As you probably realized, it's very quiet, but we're doing a lot. We have quite a few people working behind the scenes. A lot of things are happening as the gymnasium addition for the storage room that we're building out back here. It's progressing very well, to the extent that all the walls are up, all the deck and steel are all in, and they're going to be pouring the floor if it doesn't rain this week, Thursday. So, that's progressing very well. The abatement of the mercury floor, all the floor is gone now. That is all disappeared. It all went to the landfill, and we have no mercury here. So, they're right now grinding the floor, is the last step, right on schedule. They'll be finished by mid-June, right on the money. So, then, to follow that is the renovation. We're going to be doing the upgrades in there, the new flooring, painting, a whole new facelift of that space. So, it's going to look fabulous when we're done. So, we're right on schedule for early fall turnover, back to the athletic department for that. Other things that are going on is updating the cooling systems for all the data closets in the district. That's just about finished. So, that has gone on, our objective was, was to get that done before the heating season, before the warm weather came summer. So, we made it. So, that's progressed very well. We have some work to do this summer, that is, the, as I said, the gym renovations that we have to do after the mercury abatement is done. And then, we're going to be moving over to Cobble's and upgrading the entrance there. And as was alluded earlier by Mrs. Koemer, is the security upgrades, security film at the entrances, that sort of thing. So, and the camera work has been ongoing all spring. The contractor has been here wiring, and we'll be moving into installing cameras next. There's quite a few cameras that we have to put in throughout the district to enhance the security system here. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. So, we're going through till mid-fall, then we'll be wrapped up with this project, and we'll close out by the end of the year.
All right.
I know that man over there likes to hear that. So, he has to have his final cost reports in by the end of December, so we're right on target to do that.
Board members, any questions? It's great to get a comprehensive packet like you submitted. I mean, it's really helpful to us, and, you know, sometimes we're not around as much to see what's going on, so that's great. I just had a question, like, does the mercury just go to a regular landfill, or does it go in some...
Kind of, sort of, yeah.
...incantation, or...
No, it ends up, I think it may have ended up at High Acres, actually, in Fairport, so, it does. The High Acres takes all kinds of stuff. So, yeah.
Okay.
But it's all, it's, see, it's cradle to grave, so, that's the saying we use. So, it's generated here, and it's properly abated, put in proper containment, and then hauled off to the landfill, who's licensed to accept it. And there's a paper trail that follows that, so...
Well, we're glad to see it go, and we're glad things are on schedule, and appreciate, you know, your reports, so it's really great to get the updates. So, thanks, and again, thanks for hanging in here with us tonight.
Oh, absolutely. I enjoyed it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I personally have experienced the Rotary program and the exchange students. My son, who's 11th grade, has befriended a student from Sierra Leone and another one from Italy, and they've spent a ton of time at our house in the past year, and we've just thoroughly enjoyed them, just thoroughly. It's been great fun.
And before you go, where did you do your undergraduate?
Washington State University.
Okay, all right, so, that's a new one for our, to here. We'll have to get someone to go there.
I know, I would, I have stuff, I could have brought it, yeah.
Well, thanks again for updating us. Did you have a question, Mark, or you're all set? Okay, thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Yes, Barb?
I just, because you said you enjoyed everything, is there any way that the Rolling Thunder are going to be, do they get to use any of the storage area or anything like that?
Gary builds it. We, we can talk.
I just thought I'd throw it out there.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam.
You're welcome. You owe me one.
I do.
You know of anybody sitting here, who's the one who's going to ask the goofiest question, but...
I thought it was going to be about the garden.
Yeah, so did I. No, he's, it's Alan I'm getting the garden for. By the way, I did get re-elected, so...
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
Thanks for sharing. Under Board Business, we have a financial item in regard to a school lunch budget amendment. The district's food service director identified equipment in need of replacement. The estimated total cost of the equipment will be replaced as $55,000, and the school lunch assigned fund balance will be used to purchase the equipment. And purchasing new equipment is obviously an allowable use of our school lunch assigned fund balance. If I could have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve an amendment totaling $55,000 to the 2015-16 school lunch budget, as shown above, the amount submitted both as revenue and expenditure items. Second, questions? I just had a question for Mr. Maloney. What type of equipment is it?
Oh, it's just basic, it's basic kitchen equipment for cooking lunches, steamers, fryers, you name it.
Because utensils, like, you know, big utensils, obviously.
It's just updating the kitchens, more or less.
Okay, great. I thought it was some kind of piece of equipment we didn't know about, or whatever, that is new, that we could get for our kitchen, so... All right, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you for that. We wanted to get you a question in there, too.
That was good.
Policy review, our third reading and approval on 5719, administration of medication. Any updates that we've heard? Have we heard from anyone, community members?
No, we have not.
Okay, so, we're good? So, if we could have a motion in a second that policy 5719, administration of medication, above be approved as presented?
So, one second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Per the Commissioners' regulations, as we heard earlier, it's necessary to readapt the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter each year. This charter was reviewed and readapted with no changes by the committee at their May 12, 2016 meeting. The charter was given to the Board of Education, and we received an update prior to this meeting for review. If I could have a motion in a second that the Penfield Health and Safety Committee Charter is approved as submitted?
So, one second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, President's Remarks. First of all, we did, as we all know, we received, I don't know, Mike, if you can zoom in on this, but we received this little piece from the Harris Hill Conservation Club, and, which is great, and inside it had some specific information. Everybody got a different-looking one.
Yep.
And a lot of information and a puzzle on the back. I'm not sure if everybody had a puzzle on the back, and it's just great. And I mean, you know, we did send a thank you letter, but I wanted to publicly thank the Harris Hill Conservation Club and the faculty and staff that participated in that. It's great to see that, and celebrating Earth Day, et cetera. So, glad we could get that. Vote results, following the vote results from the May 17 budget vote and election, as certified by the inspectors of election. Proposition number one, the budget passed, 962 votes to 336 no votes. Proposition two, bus proposition passed, 995 yes votes to 302 no votes. The Capitol Project passed, 984 votes to 312 no votes. And the establishment of a Capitol Reserve passed, 959 yes votes to 335 no votes. The candidates who were uncontested received the following votes, Barbara L. Babiar's 1,114 votes, John Piper 1,106 votes, and we have 53 write-in votes. So, that was the tabulation, and in doing, using the computers this year, we had significantly higher amount of write-in votes. I'm not going to give any of the candidates any credence, but some well-known people throughout the community and the country, so, and some not-so-well-known people from, throughout, but we didn't get that with the machines. But congratulations to Mrs. Babiar's, and I appreciate the support from the community as well.
You won't congratulate yourself, so I will. Congratulations to John Piper as well.
And we'll be getting our new term, three-year term, July 1st, 2016, and it will end on June 30th, 2019. So, it seems like a long time from now. Next item, you have in your packet the Board of Education Strategic Plan Goals and Objectives that has been updated with completed items, and as you know, we'll be having a planning session July 5th, I think it was. We all could make that date. So, well, in the interim, I'll be sending out, as we did last year, a form to you to ask your comments on our goals and objectives, how you think we did, what can we change, what can look different, and any other comments and thoughts. So, we used that model form last year, and I'll get it out again in time before our meeting, and then I'll be happy to facilitate us again as we look at our accomplishments and plan our strategic plan for the board. And then, our timetable has it flowing to the district staff before they do their strategic goals and objectives, and we've got it down to a pretty good system of working there. I did want to comment also, at the board president's meeting of Monroe County School Boards last week, the topic came up, and I mentioned that we had a strategic plan, and a lot of people were surprised by that, that we had a separate board plan. So, Sherri Johnson asked that we send it, so I had Marcia send it to Sherri Johnson, and she sent it out to all of the board presidents to take a look at. So, it's our way of sharing, and, but it seemed like a lot of the board presidents or boards just didn't have that type of focus, so maybe they'll, they'll take advantage of that. Under New Business, Shadow Pines Moratorium Committee. As you know, we've given you some updates, and Dr. Putnam and myself are on the Shadow Pines Moratorium Committee, representing the school district. The 22-member organization has met three times, and we have a professional facilitator, and we met last night, and... And as of last night, the group is broken down into subcommittees, of which we made it clear we would not be on, because we're neutral in this process. And we are obviously recipients of everything that goes on with this process. But I wanted to note the five subcommittees that were formed that gave reports last night. So, there was one on Shadow Pines continuing as a golf course. One, Shadow Pines as recreation or open space, which they also focused on the town possibly buying and having a voter referendum. Shadow Pines being developed for single-family detached residential use. Shadow Pines being developed for cluster development, which is different types of housing. You might have zero lot line, you might have condominiums, you might have apartments, you might have an assortment. And then, the fifth one was Shadow Pines being developed for mixed use, which is very similar but involves commercial structures. So, in each of the cases, as they move forward, the next step is, we're on the school board, school district committee, obviously. So, each of those groups will ask us for information. So, I've asked Dr. Putnam and Dr. Sansucci, and maybe Mr. Maloney's involved in that, to come up with some consistent things that we can provide in regard to each of these scenarios and the impact on the district. So, example, right now, we collect $52,000 in taxes annually from Shadow Pines. So, what would that look like under each of these scenarios? And it's obviously a differing amount of money. If it's open space, obviously, it's nothing. And then, the second part is, what would be the impact on schools? Because that's a big issue. And where would we put everybody? You know, because that could tend to lead to, you know, some other form of shifting around and school additions. But they have to get this report done, and we're meeting on, I'm trying, June 6. We meet all the time. And then, they're going to, basically, their charge is to report back to the town board with a recommendation. And it's a very emotional group. There's 22 people. We have 10 adjoining landowners. We have four individuals, ourselves, a historical district conservation representative, and six general landowners from the community. So, you know, everybody very cooperative, but a lot of emotion going on with that as to the outcome. And we have the staff there, Jim Costello and two staff people. And it's all recorded, and you can obviously see things online and take a look at it. But we're concerned about our scenarios, obviously. And it's, as we mentioned last night, or Dr. Putnam mentioned last night, it's a guesstimate, anything we provide, because we just don't know. And so, ultimately, there will be a recommendation. The next two dates, they're having a informational public hearing that is actually scheduled for June 23, the night of June 23. That should ring a bell with all of us. And I did bring up the concerns that some community members may be left out of the mix, 800 to 1,000. But they will have things out in advance for community questions, and we will link that to our website, so everybody could get questions ahead of time and afterwards, because it will be taped. And then, their meeting again, their next meeting was scheduled for July 12, which should ring a bell. And they're going to change that. So, we've changed, we've had to change several meetings based on some thoughts that we had.
But the graduation, I mean, why is that so set in stone? Why can't they rearrange that?
It's really, it's a great question. The facilitator is the key person. He comes from out of town and the group itself. So, in going around the table, besides the two of us, there was only one parent that really had a concern about graduation. So, but we made it clear that we felt it should be another time.
Yeah.
But again, the schedule is to make a report to the town board by July 29. So, it's very aggressive. But, and there have been some individuals that felt it should be expanded. And, but the group will get their goals accomplished and make some presentation to the town board. It could be all of these alternatives, or it could be one. So, you know, we're there, representing the district and observing, watching, and offering what we can to help. The town board can do whatever they want, obviously. And certainly, they have to talk to their attorneys and look at a lot of different things. So, any questions on that? Yes?
I don't have a question, but since the community, since it's not really, last meeting, we said that the meetings would be taped. So, I just wanted to let people know that there is a Facebook page called Save the Pines, and there's a space between, so it's three separate words, Save the Pines, on Facebook. And if you want to watch any of the meetings, they've all been recorded, and you can go there and click on them and watch them. They also have a webpage. It's savethepines.org, so that one doesn't have any spaces. Savethepines.org. You can get information there, and you can also link to the Facebook page. So, I thought that might be helpful for the community to know, because we weren't sure last time how people would watch the meetings and probably going to Facebook or that website and clicking on it. You'll be able to see the meeting. They are over two hours each, but I think even watching the one where they introduce each of the people is interesting, and it'll give you a feel for the kinds of discussions that they're having.
I would just share, too, is that those are all on the town board page, too. So, because the town is doing the recording, so the Save the Pines is linking back to the towns page. And so, there are some other documents on the town, Penfield Town page.
Penfield.org.
Yes. And, and-
If I didn't say anything, somebody would answer. So, yes, is at Penfield.org.
And the ones you mentioned are great sources of information, but we need to keep in the framework that they are advocacy pages on behalf of a certain group. So, but I think anything that we do, obviously, is consistent on each one. So, if you want to see the work of the moratorium committee, it's there. Mark?
I was going to say, as you look at the proposals for how those options affect us, affect the district, and part of its enrollment, the other part of it would be transportation, because those are key intersections. And that is, that's already very jammed up. So-
So, I think what they're looking at is, and will be able to share out, too, is these matrix. So, education, the impact in education for each of those scenarios is one part of the matrix. But then, traffic and transportation is one, infrastructure. And so, you're right, because the transportation impact will not only be for the whole community, but for, for us as a district, too.
Specifically for us, yes.
Yeah.
And we've tried to just avoid, you know, a couple of the members of the committee have their own ideas of what it would cost us. And, you know, we're just, it may not be accurate. So, we want to give as much accurate information as we can on all of the scenarios. But as Tom mentioned, it is a grid, and it'll be interesting to see where it goes. It's, again, we have a great facilitator. He's done this type of thing before, and he does keep everybody on mission, which is important. Catherine?
So, what are you basing all these scenarios on? Right now, all we know is that it's for sale. That's all we know, right? It hasn't been bought, as far as we know. So, we don't, for all the scenarios that they're coming up with, everything is speculation, right? Or is there any, is there any other variable that has become definite?
I would say no. But it's, so it's, and again, it's the people on the committee who are, many of them have a lot of expert opinions based on their career and living in Penfield. So, it is sort of, each subcommittee is reviewing each of the, that scenario of their choice and then sort of gathering the information. So, there are a lot of people talking to other people and reaching out to people they know. But there is, there's a lot of, it's a lot of qualitative data. I would share that. They've shared with us the traffic reports. They're working on the, the plan, the town plan. And so, they're working on that. But there is a lot of, there's a lot of sort of guesstimate in terms of what that would look like.
Yeah.
Some of them are easier. If it's recreational, open space, that would have less of an impact on traffic than building houses. And then, there is some sort of guesstimate. And if you do watch last night's video, I think I might have said 47 times that we are working on assumptions and guesses. And so, I am just very worried in terms of, I'd let the whole committee know and publicly that, you know, we don't have the exact answer. I won't be able to tell you the dollar amount we're going to collect in taxes if X number of homes are built, because there's so many variables. What is it, what, you know, what is the estimate of the house? What is it assessed at? When will they be finished building? So, there's a lot of those pieces that are there, what the inflation rate's going to be between now and five years from now. And so, that committee understands it, but I also want to make sure that if I ever share out, this is what we think would be the impact on taxes, that it is a draft, and we're making a lot of educated guesses, but it's playing on assumptions. And so, just because I don't want the community ever think that I said something at this community meeting, moratorium meeting, and then, five years from now, the numbers are a little different. And so, that's what's hard, because people do want to think, you know, hard numbers, but, but we can't do that, nor can the town. I mean, the town also can't give hard numbers of, of impact on taxes with or without new homes or mixed use.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Like any institution, they're forward-looking statements. And they-
Yes.
Yep.
And, and I think that's a great point, because keeping the group focused on forward-looking is difficult, because the quarry isn't included in this. And several people wanted that included. But here's what we do know. The quarry will be operating for at least 20 more years. So, the owners have said that. So, that's a given. We do know that on Thursday, Shadow Lake, the closing will take place, that the former owners of Dolomite, one of the brothers will take that over. So, that will happen. So, that's a certainty that we do know. And certainly, they might not want another golf course, you know, you know, near them, but it, it all worked out. So, that's the only certain certainties that we know. We are learning a lot about R1s and R2s and every zoning law in the world. And we've got some great staff people on the town. But ultimately, just like what happens here, the recommendation will come to the board, and the board will make a decision. And who knows what will happen after that. But there certainly is a party that has an interest in the Shadow Pines to do residential development, and that's how this started, and they've backed off while this, obviously, because there is a moratorium. But we do know there, there is an interest.